Tomorrow, after forty-seven short years here in Stone Ridge. It's been a marvelous career. It's been terrific working with this group over the years, some of you longer than others. But I'm truly impressed by making this, I think, one of the finest colleges in New York State. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'd like to introduce our board chair, William Spearman, who has joined us this evening, and we may have some other trustees. Hopefully, I'll be able to. I have to congratulate Mr. Spearman. This past year, he not only served as Chair of our Board, but stepped up to be Chair of the Steering Committee and Search Committee for my replacement. And Dr. Al Roberts will start on July 27th, and he's an excellent, excellent choice. Bill, an excellent job. I'd also like to introduce members of the executive staff here this evening. Anne Marot, Vice President and Dean of Enrollment Management. John Dunn, who will actually present the budget figures to you tonight. He's our interim Dean of Administration. He and I served together for twenty years. And then he went to Dutchess Community College for a significant salary increase, and I didn't talk to him for nine months, and he was there for twenty years. He's helping us now as we search for a permanent Dean of Administration. Christopher Marks, Dean of Continuing Professional Education. As John will be able to show you, the restricted portion of our budget is one, a little bit over $1 million less than the budget approved for this year. That's a reduction of 4.18%. And this is the second year in a row where we were able to avoid a tuition increase. I'd like to briefly review the highlights of the past year. Fifty-plus years of accomplishment. This current year, we had three, thirty-six hundred students. We have graduated more than 20,000 graduates. We have enrolled more than 90,000 individuals in the Mid-Hudson area to attend credit and non-credit classes. Sixty-seven academic programs now at SUNY Ulster, and we have over 1,700 students studying online per year. Two months ago, we graduated 556 students. It is definitely the highlight of the year when we see the results of our labors and the delight on individual faces as they go across the stage receiving their degree. As I've shared with you before, this is a concern of ours that the number of high school graduates will continue to go down. Based on enrollments now by class, we show that by the class of 2026, we'll have about a 7% decline in the number of high school graduates. That's a very important concern of ours because we project our enrollment on the cohort coming directly from the high schools coming to the college and base the other cohorts on that number. So it is something to be concerned about. And that brings up the importance of strategic enrollment management. We have to take a careful look at our curricular and program developments. We have to look at retention of students, at what we refer to as student success. We have to pay attention to institutional marketing, academic advising, methods of program delivery, and quality of campus life and facilities. Closing the enrollment gap, our opportunities, increase, increased student retention, progression, graduation. The Chancellor of State University of New York, Nancy Zinfer, is charging all sixty-four campuses to pay attention to that first column, retention, progression, and graduation. There is a major push to see better results in that area. Increased student engagement. We know if a student is engaged, he or she is going to stay here and most likely graduate. Increased options for adult students. Expand online courses and programs. Create a launch pathway from non-credit courses to credit. And also to develop the Kingston Center of SUNY Ulster will be coming online this August. We are, Chris Marks and John Dunn are constantly talking about the moving from the BRC over to our new Kingston Center, the former Sophie Finn Elementary School on Mary's Avenue. I'd like to share with you that recently, the United States Department of Education recently reported that SUNY Ulster was among the top ninety-five community colleges in the country with the lowest net price after scholarships and grant aid. Fifty-seven percent of our students received some type of federal grant. Our net cost, our net cost was listed at $4,247. Ulster was the only SUNY community college on the list, and there are close to about 1,100 public community colleges in the country. We're very proud of that. I'm pleased to announce that for the sixth year in a row, we've been designated a military-friendly college. Vice President Marot and I meet three or four times a year with a focus group of veterans, making sure that SUNY Ulster does everything we can to ease the transition back into civilian life. And I was very touched at Veterans Day celebration. The club presented me with a plaque, realizing how important it was to take, pay special attention to their needs. I just want to share with you quickly national, regional employers of our graduates. But invariably, seventy percent of our graduates will go on and transfer and study for their baccalaureate degrees. And I've listed here some of the more popular four-year schools that are in their, on their list to consider. Would like to report that the Ulster Community College Foundation raised nearly $700,000 this past year. That represents 134% of its annual goal, and it is just a tremendous contribution to the college to raise private funds to supplement the operation of the college. We still have a very strong emphasis on our international programs to prepare students to live and work in a global society. I've listed some countries where we have sent our students either individually to study abroad or to actually take a class in another country. And we also listed where we have hosted students from countries throughout the world. This map indicates places that SUNY Ulster has appeared. Truly an international program. I'd like to share with you that our college scholars program, which provides full tuition scholarships to those graduating in the top 10% of their high school class, continues to be strong. More than 250 of Ulster County High School students have benefited from the program during the last decade, and over 700 students since inception of the program in the late seventies. The Collegiate Program is our college courses being offered in the high schools throughout Ulster County. These courses are taught by qualified high school teachers who would be qualified to teach as adjuncts here at the campus. As this slide shows, over 1,300 students registered for these courses during 2014-15. A little bit more than 25% are on the free or reduced lunch program, and currently, the college policy is that they pay only $1 per credit. If somebody was truly talented and took all twenty courses, he would, or she would receive an associate's degree for $60. That's a very good deal. However, that is going to be, that is going to be reviewed this year. We do have some concerns about state funding with the program, and that's under review. But up until this point in time, that was a real benefit, and the school districts were very, very appreciative. The last item on this chart is the College Readiness Initiative. That is to test students at the end of their eleventh grade, and if they're not college-ready in English and math, they take the remediation course during their fall semester of their senior year. And we started this in Walk Hill with terrific results. All but two students. Otherwise, if they didn't have this program, they're tested into remedial course here in their first semester at Ulster, they would be taking a non-credit English developmental writing course. I think now we have six other high schools that are participating in that program. We continue to have a strong presence in business training grants. We're one of the most active community colleges in SUNY, providing these training programs mostly at the place of work of the employees. But we really have a great success rate with those programs. Our Development Center for Business, under Chris Marks's leadership, continues to work with our companies throughout Ulster County, also providing training programs for their employees. Our Small Business Development Center, which is funded by a Small Business Administration federal grant through the State University of New York, provides free business counseling to anyone starting a business or expanding a business. The client does not pay for this service. It's paid through the federal grant. To date, and we've been in business for a little over thirty years, we represent seven counties in the Mid-Hudson region. Close to $600 million have been invested in either startups or expansions in the business sector. That's a remarkable record. We continue to be involved in Startup New York. As many of you know, SUNY Ulster was among the first six campuses designated to take part in this program. We have three new companies already in the startup program. This is where the companies qualify and are accepted, receive ten years of tax benefits to, to actually establish their company in New York State. We have eight more companies in the process, and we hope by September to have eleven companies participating in Startup New York, creating more than 140 jobs for residents of Ulster We continue to support advanced manufacturing, partnership with Alcoa, JPT, Wolf Tech, and Salux. Over $1 million in grant awards have been received for this area. And this past year, we collaborated with Ulster Works, One Stop, Bosse's, and local manufacturers to offer the county executives guaranteed jobs program. And that, during this past year, ninety percent of the students who finished the program were placed in a manufacturing position. Recently, SUNY Ulster Engineering Program received four marker bot 3D printers from SUNY New Pulse. If you've been reading the papers, SUNY New Pulse is really taking this on as a major focus of their engineering program. And as part of their grant that they received through Empire Development Corporation, they purposely collaborated with the area community colleges so that our engineering students can be getting the same kind of training during their first two years as, I ruined the machinery here, John, sorry. So that when they do transfer to New Pulse, they've had the same type of education during their freshman and sophomore years as the students at New Pulse. Our new academic program for this fall, Fashion Design, shows the, actually, the full-time instructor, Kristen Flynn. This was her idea ten years ago when she joined our staff as an adjunct. She has a background in design with Adidas. She's a marvelous instructor. She stuck with it, worked with our Dean of Academic Affairs Office, finally had it approved by SUNY and registered with the State Education Department. We think it's going to be a very nice addition to our art programs. And so now I will turn it over to John Dunn, who will go through the actual budget figures, and then we'll have time for any questions you might have. Thank you very much.
My name is John Dunn. I worked at Ulster for a long time, and then went over to Dutchess for eighteen years. In mid-June, I was asked if I could help out with the budget process, so I'm approaching maybe a month of being here, so my learning curve's still in progress. Beginning process of the budget for next year was to fix our costs and expenses and revenues for this year. When I came to Ulster, they were having some difficulty with financing the rest of the year, whether we were going to make it or we would lose money. I think we put controls in place, and we got that relatively clearly good projections for the end of the year with the help of the various deans, departments, and staff at the college. So we got a comfort level with our current year and used that to build the next year's budget. So we're going to go through executive budget summary, and the main part of this first page is to show you that the total for the budget is based on the forecast for 15. And we, what we did is we went down 1% from this year's forecast, 4% below this year's adopted, and 5% below last year's actual. Go to the next slide. In identifying the next year's budget, we had to get a lock on our revenues. So we did an analysis of where the revenues are, and I think you have to realize that two-thirds of our funding is driven by enrollment. So enrollment drives tuition, state aid, and a lot of the fee structure. So take a look at the student tuition. It went from $9,520,000 down to this year's forecast of $8,900,000, and next year's at around $8,600,000. And that's because we are projecting a slight reduction in enrollment. We use these assumptions to get through the, the revenue projections, and the assumption of down about 100 FTEs is what drives that tuition number. The state aid, while it increased by $100 per FTE, since our enrollment is down, it's going to come down a little bit. But we are cushioned on the, on the state aid because it's funded on a rolling average or last year's actual. So when we get to the state aid page, you'll see that even though our enrollment is down, our state aid has a slight increase per rate, and our eight FTEs are stabilized a bit with the rolling average. Other revenues down about $200,000, and that's because the lost the CLS program. That also has a reduction in expenses with it. Chargeback almost the same, about $10,000 more than budget. And then we come to the county share, which is up 2%, or 120,000. On the graph for that, you go right to the graph, you can see that our tuition is 35% of the budget. Our state aid is 24, and that, in conjunction with the part of the other revenue that has fees, makes up about 70% of our budget is based on enrollment. Source of revenue was percentage on the next slide. You can see where we fit in the, in the chart. 26% local sponsored, that's not including the chargebacks. Other is 12%. State aid, 24, and tuition, 35. Next slide. You can see in the tuition calculations, again, we emphasized before, we went from $9,520,000 down to $8,900,000, down to $8,600,000. So the emphasis on that loss of revenue because of enrollment is very important. Next slide. And here you see our, our tuition. The fact that we didn't increase it has really improved our position with the local schools. While we used to be relatively high in full-time tuition, we're now grouped in with Columbia Green, Westchester, Rockland. So Columbia Green is 42, Rockland is 43. So we're right in the middle of that mix, which makes us a lot more competitive. And we were at the top, kind of right below Sullivan. Next slide. Here is part-time tuition rate. Again, without increasing that now, we're actually trending toward the low side of the part-time rate. We did include the SUNY New Pulse figures in there also, in case you're interested. They're 270, and the SUNY New Pulse full-time rate was 6470. We had a calculation for state aid, as I said, based on FTEs. Last year's actual turned out to be 2268, and that's what we use to fund this year. Next year is rolling average of the three, and that works out to 2203. So we know what next year's actual FTEs are going to be for the funding part, and we know what this year's. So the state aid is just about locked in. You can't change very much. Take a look at the historical state aid contribution on the next slide. We had a high of 2675 in 2008. Now we're back at 2597. We're about $78 below the high, but at least we're, we're gaining momentum on regaining state aid. Next slide is the sponsor. You can see, we had an eight-year freeze on the sponsor share. Now we have an increase, the 2%, or 120,000. So you can see the history, that it's been relatively stable for eight years. Next slide. In the expenditure side, we have, to use assumptions on that side also, and the salary and wages show a slight increase because of negotiated salary increases, but they reflect [inaudible]. That were cut. Benefits, same thing, it's gone up, but primarily for rate increase because we netted out the people who retired. The contractual supply, again, that's down, 198,000. It was because of that program, CLS, that was removed. Equipment, it's a minimal change. It's like $100,000, but we only spent about $400,000. Can you go to the pie chart for the expenses? On that pie chart, you'll see that there's an awful lot of expenses we have little control over. The salary and wages, 51% of our budget. Benefits, 24% of our budget. So about 75% of the budget is kind of out of our hands. We can control the contractual and the equipment, but we don't have a lot of leeway with the 75% of our budget. You can go to the next slide. The schedule for the budget is that, we're hoping to get it through the legislature the 21st. It's due in SUNY on the 15th of August, and if it makes SUNY by then, then we go into the state Board of Trustees and state funding, and they will vote on it in September. And if they do that, we'll get state aid in the fall. If we don't make those deadlines, we don't get state aid till December. So we would have to go through September, October, November without aid unless we get this through. I've done well over thirty-five of these budgets. It's a sound budget. It will go through the state. The college can live with it. It needs to be tweaked, like everything, it's a budget. But I think it'll work out well, and I think the staff can live with it and is relatively competent with it. Questions?
Dave, can you explain what the difference is from the budget that was presented to us last month and this?
Well, some areas changed, primarily personnel and revenues. Don did a spreadsheet on it, and, you know, the, the, the total revenues were overstated, so we came down. The...
You came down by what?
$156,000.
Less than 1% of what?
Oh, yeah.
All right, so you came, you came down 1%. Okay, because, you know, my, you know, when we take a look at, when we have our budget analysts come in and look at our budget, you know, we often get different things, and, you know, one day may tell you one or two or three percent here, one percent there, and then we even have to make a decision on the end. So, I mean, this was just a mere 1%. Okay. And we held the budget up for a month.
And, and expenses, a little bit more, they, they came down 1.6%. But again, the, the new budget is built on this year's actual, so we got a pretty good fix on that. We only have three more payrolls.
Right. What I'm, I'm just saying that it doesn't seem that there is not much of a change that took place that, in other words, the budget that was there before was relatively sound as it was, just as this one is.
Yeah, just certain areas...
Shifted around a few chairs on the Titanic. I don't, you don't, don't mean to use the Titanic as an indication that you're sinking and you're not. Uh, yeah, but no, you shifted around some chairs. All right, but, so it was held up for a month, and that, that's fine.
Yeah, but the, this, we certified that these are going to be where they are. And the shifts were made between the lines that they didn't use the money this year, they're not going to get it next year.
Right. Thank you.
Ken?
Thanks, Don. Okay. I'm looking at the budget here, and I just want to make sure I'm not seeing this wrong. There, the college is appropriating the, what is the last of its unrestricted fund balance, leaving it without any, any fund balance?
We're not using fund balance.
Not using fund balance?
Using fund balance at all.
So I guess the question is, how much money is in the college's fund balance?
It's 255 currently, and we're hoping to add 100 to it at the end of this year.
Okay.
But again, we still have to get through a couple of months, and we still have to be sure all our projections are right.
Okay. Does the college have a plan to move back towards the comptroller's recommended fund balance?
In our strategic plan, we discussed that, and we set a goal to add at least $100,000 each year for the next three to five years.
So we aren't heading in the right direction. Very honestly, we were doing pretty well when I, the first few years that I was president, just because we had a very healthy enrollment and we could put more into the fund balance. We changed auditors, and there was a difference in how we were reporting a $2 million loan we took out for improvements in our total HVAC system to save money overall. And their recommendation was it had to be the different part of the report and eliminated like 80.850,000 of the fund balance. We went to a negative for two years. But I think we're going in the right direction now.
All right, thank you.
I also wanted to point out one more thing, that because we're so determined to, dependent on enrollment, we're going to have a freeze on the budget in September and October till we see how we do in the fall. Because everything's dependent on enrollment, and we can't go through and say everything's fine and then change in May. It's too late. You have to start out in the beginning with a conservative point of view, and we'll be doing only emergency purchases and stuff until we know what our fall enrollment is. That'll be October.
I, I, Richard, if I could, I've got one more question on that now, talking about, you know, because, because the budget is so dependent on enrollment, does the college have a plan to try to increase enrollment? I know that we're opening up the, the Sophie Finn School as our satellite up in Kingston, hoping to increase the enrollment in the city of Kingston. But I also know that the college had planned another business center out in the town of Ulster, which is in the relative same portion of the county as, as the, as the new annex is going to be in the city of Kingston. And coming, representing an, an outer area of the county and knowing the budgets as they've been with the chargeback, so many of our students going to other community colleges because of the location of Ulster County Community College, is there a thought that maybe if we had a, a second business center or a second annex somewhere, that putting it in an area of the county where a lot, where there's a lot of outflux of, of students to other community colleges, maybe to capture some of that? I, I just, I don't know if there's been any discussion on that with the trustees or the college.
He knows my soapbox. I'm on it all the time. You can't ignore the number of students that are leaving this county to go to the community college.
Agreed.
It's like you're hemorrhaging. So something has to be done, and it, it's whether we do an analysis of the students, why they go, programs, location, cost, et cetera. But there has to be an attempt to try to address that issue. The new president and the cabinet, we went through it last week. He agrees enrollment is our number-one concern. So it, as I said, it has to be addressed. It may take time, and it may take a lot of planning, but your enrollment is crucial, so you have to take care of it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Ken actually asked a question I was going to bring up about enrollment. I would offer the town of Marlborough to be an annex place to have a satellite area for Ulster Community College. But there again, with the Sophie Finn School, do you have any plan, I mean, what do you see as enrollment for that particular program or that particular school? And do you, is that a discounted program for...
Discounted. One of the things with Sophie Finn School, it's, it's a thousand feet from the Kingston School, High School. We're very excited. We've met twice now with the school officials, and they're very excited about further collaboration. As I did tell you, we had a number of students taking college courses in the high school. Kingston High School does participate in that program. But we're talking now about perhaps a dual enrollment program where the students will possibly come over ninth period and their... possibly come over ninth period, and there's still bus transportation after ninth period. They could take a two-hundred-level course with us, and theoretically, a young man or woman could receive their high school diploma along with an associate degree. That's a very exciting program, I think you're going to see that in the very near future because of the location of the school. We are very actively promoting registrations. We expect most students will go from the BRC to the Sophie Finn School, especially in the greater Kingston area. But we do have some opportunities also to work with the two hospitals in terms of in-service training. I think that's going to increase our enrollments as well.
Just one other comment. President Cott, on behalf of the legislative body, I think I speak for all of us, for all your great service over the years, and your years as president, we're going to be sorely missed, I'm sure, to new individuals going to come in and do a great job, but you've been a big asset to Ulster Community College.
Thank you, Richard, appreciate it.
Any other questions?
You know, the postponement of the budget, some of the comments or lack of comments in the press, sort of cast a little shadow available of what's going on, at least in my trading area. You told me what went wrong, what's wrong, what's right. I mean, it doesn't seem like it's made a significant difference in your assets, your income or your expenses, but a lot of the folks were very concerned, or at least they expressed that.
The biggest change, in my opinion, was updating the forecasts of this year. When our former dean of administration was going through it, he based it on the forecast of spending as of March. When John came in, he brought it right up to date to June, so we had a really better handle on what we were spending this year, as he explained. That's how we went through to allocate in the contract and supply line, based on what we believe will actually be spent this year. The fact that we're closer to the end of our fiscal year, which is August thirty-first, makes that updated forecast much more accurate, and we think that the actual distribution of funds now is more accurately distributed.
But just curiously, if you go backwards, they've been using that model for the last five, ten, twenty years.
Probably forty-seven years.
Those things sort of catch up with each other. It wasn't quite the crisis that it was made out to be, I don't think, from what I'm hearing.
When I walked in, this was an institution in a crisis mode, it looked like we were going to spend more than we made. And we did stop everything, we stopped spending. And the only place you can control is contractual services. So Amy and I go through open purchasers, we try to cancel what's not spent yet. I mean, we're managing that line every day. And the other part is communication. You know, we developed the budget, but we did share it with the deans before we gave it to the county, before we gave it to the board, and to see if they could live with it. And they did identify three or four areas of concern that the new president and the cabinet are going to put in priority order and work on. So we've got the input, we know where the questions are, and, you know, we're ready to go forward.
But overall, it really wasn't much of a change, but anyway, that's fine. I want to thank you guys, you did a great job on the budget, and thank you for your service, Don. And you're, you know, you're an inspiration to a lot of people, you're an ombud guy, you're very intelligent and a great leader at the same time, a very rare qualities person.
Thank you.
So thank you for your service, and I think we need to move on.
Thank you, everyone.
I wanted to follow up on what legislator Ron had said about the chargeback fees. You know, strategically, if you had an idea, like perhaps, I know Duchess County Community College just had dormitories built, you know, back in the day, the national exposure that the soccer program got would draw students in from other counties, you know, because it seems like that disparity is why, you know, perhaps if you built student housing, it would keep students in Ulster County, it would draw students from other counties, so you would, you know, tackle that problem from both angles.
We changed our trustees pretty significantly, so the new president will have to start X one, and really plan to see if student housing makes sense for us. Absolutely. And also, when I've talked with presidents of other community colleges, once you build on-campus housing, you have a built-in student body, it also affects the commuters, that they feel more attached because they're joining people who are already there. Again, I think it's going to be on the to-do list to look at.
Thank you.
No order, George?
No.
Okay, call the meeting to order, please stand for the pleasure of a flag and a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Fire evacuation plan. Please note that in the event of an emergency, the fire department has requested that legislators and all others move to the adjacent parking lot in order not to impede the firefighters in their duties. Cell phones, please silence cell phones and refrain from texting for the duration of the public hearing. Roll call, Allen.
Here.
Archer.
Here.
Bartels.
Here.
Belfilio.
Here.
Briggs.
President.
Donaldson.
Here.
Fabiano. Gerantine.
Here.
Green.
Yes.
Gregorius.
Sir.
Litz.
Here.
Lopez. Lauren.
Here.
Mayo.
Here.
Maloney.
Here.
Parity John.
Yep.
Parity Richard. Provenzano. Roberts. Rodriguez.
President.
Ronk.
President.
Woro.
Here.
And Wischnik.
Yes.
Nineteen present, four absent. Tonight's public hearing is on the tentative budget for the Ulster County Community College for the fiscal year commencing September first, two thousand and fifteen. And there are no speakers signed up.
Anyone want to chat? Was a motion on the floor to adjourn? A motion has been seconded. I guess we have to give, anyone who may be running up the stairs just another second or two to get here. All in favor?
Aye.
Carry. There'll be a, we have a motion to adjourn, well, re-adjourn the public hearing.
Yeah, they have a joint meeting.
Joint meeting, Ways and Means on Legislative Programs, in the college lounge.
That's here.
That's here, okay. Immediately followed by the caucuses, two-five-three upstairs for the Dems, and one-one-two downstairs for the Republicans. Next meeting is Tuesday, July two-one, seven o'clock. Move to adjourn? Carry. There you are.
It was easier than ever.
Than ever?
Than ever. We didn't even have one person.
Huh?
Not even one person.
No. Okay, now they're having a joint session.
They're going to have a joint meeting to approve this budget resolution.
Yours was screwed up.
And then we're going to do caucus. I don't know that the Republicans are caucusing, they're sure yes on everything.
That's good.
The...
Have you done this before?
And that's that. That's the only thing they have to shop about, so I don't think they're caucusing.